Welcome to the Wednesday, February twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the Library Board Trustees. I'm Ruth Gross, Board Chairman, and I will have everyone introduce themselves.
Jennifer Jones, Library Director.
Nancy Lefebvre, Trustee.
Patrick Marshall, Trustee.
And we are being recorded by John Cronin of Lakeham. First on the agenda is the Secretary's Report. Thank you, Patrick.
So you have the Secretary's Report in your package, and I would move to waive the reading of the January thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting minutes and move to approve.
Aye, Secretary. All of us in favor?
Aye.
Alright, we will move on then. Okay, financial report and gifts.
So there are no gifts to report this month, but we are doing okay with our budget, you know, other than the water.
Other than the water.
I said that every month.
Which is nearly nine hundred percent of our budget.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, when we approach it, we appropriate seven fifty, seven hundred and fifty dollars, and so far we spent six thousand seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars. There's a reason why that percentage is like crazy.
Yeah, and I haven't heard the status of the funding for the well, so we'll have to keep an eye out.
So they're not actually working on the well itself? They're still working on finding money to fix the well?
Well, no, they had, it was supposed to be through ARPA funds as far as I know, but I don't know which ARPA funds that was coming from, whether it was county or fed.
Outside of county, you mean?
Outside of county.
Just making sure, Jennifer, are you good with office equipment and I noticed custodial supply?
Yeah, we're, I kind of bumped those in the next budget by shifting some things around because we have been going through supplies, so, yeah, I've been using other funds to cover that. But we do have, yeah, custodial, we're pretty much almost done spending in the office. We have a little bit left, so.
Put out a box, donations of Windex.
Yeah. Paper towels.
Paper towels.
Paper towels, yeah.
It's really expensive, and I imagine it's just gonna get even more expensive for paper towels and things when tariffs are coming, so it will be.
Only if they're made from Canadian wood fibers.
Right.
As most things are.
I don't know. I'd have to check.
Oh dear.
Okay. Our gifts fund.
No, we no gifts. Oh, and the gift funds, there were some expenditures for service, which was the one you approved. I've been getting now the new balances, so that is the fifty-two, five-oh-nine will be the correct balance until I get the next monthly report, and it's been getting a lot of interest, so it's been steadily going up.
Good. That kind of interest, okay, good.
Interest and, yeah.
Okay.
Interest funds released to us so that we can expend them, and then state aid, we should probably be getting the next check around April, I think, is when they usually release it, so.
So the service fund, we have earmarked towards children's programming, things like that, right?
Mm-hmm, there is an idea, so I'll put together something for a future meeting of possibly looking at making the children's room a little more fun, with some addition of not a flying wall necessarily, I'm just, I'm having visions of liability there, but more like activity tables or something that we can do to change it up, possibly going to laptops instead of dedicated desktops, so using some of that money to make that vision happen, so since it is earmarked for children, that might be a good use of the funds.
Do we have a minimum amount that we have to stop with taking out of the service funds?
So there is a non expendable part that doesn't go into the expendable report.
This is just the expendable.
Oh.
So we, when we received the material, we couldn't use it for a number of years, so that's why it wasn't ever involved with the building plan for the, this building, and it was just, I would say, maybe less than ten years that we've been able to actually draw off of it, because they had hit a certain valuation.
So this has been moved into an expendable.
Nice.
So I don't know if they then, you know, when the non expendable, if that happens to dip down, if they then go and
No, I don't think it comes out.
Okay.
I think it's once it's in our expendable account that it's there to spend, and whatever happens, that means that we just can't draw more off the the base.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, Director's Report.
Okay, so I am working through through doing some discarding and nonfiction for the ones, books that have been, haven't been checked out over the last four to five years, so we finished up to the five hundreds, still working on the six hundreds, and I've been steadily replacing with anything that we have.
So the question is, where are the discarded books going?
So they go into a bin, if they're in good enough shape, that goes to Bay State Books, and then they donate them, recycle them, or resell them.
And if they're not, they're recycled, period, you refer to here.
Recycled, period, yeah.
Is, is there any way in the system, like when you take out a book, to find out if it is available to patrons, if somebody wanted that particular book?
Yeah, we can see if it's, other libraries have it, or usually Commonwealth Catalog will have it too, we can, we can find it there.
Okay.
And then I'm looking at possibly adding binge boxes from Midwest Tate, because we've talked about how the DVD collection still sees a lot of use, but it's kind of going on the outs. Yeah, and so the binge boxes would save space and also might be a good thing for people who are just looking to take a bunch of movies for a weekend, so.
I think, you know, the success of the hidden books for Valentine's Day makes it kind of clear that people like being surprised by what they get at the library. Did you see that? What they have done, that was But I think they checked out a lot of those books.
Yeah, she went through almost all of the ones she wrapped up. I think she did go through all she wrapped up.
Yeah.
And are you having good response on the monthly focus book for the
Oh, for the Mass Center for the Books Book Challenge? I think, yeah, I think they're having a good response to that, too. I'm not sure exactly how many people are participating, I'm not sure if I can see that. I might be able to ask Mass Center for the Book if they have statistics on that, to see how many participate from Lakeville. And, okay, Youth Services Storytimes resumed at the end of January, and she got big crowds, one hundred and seventy people attended across the three storytimes the first week. So she's figuring that they'll naturally get to a level that's much more manageable in terms of the amount of people, and then Thursday afternoon Storytimes will make a return in the summer. Two coding sessions using robots, Dash and Sphero had a small attendance, but that meant that the kids got equal coding time, which was good. So the kids got Dash through a maze and then worked with Teresa to code for Sphero, because he's a little bit faster, more powerful.
Bot.
Yes, robot. And then Playing with Purpose had seven attendees. She will continue that through on the third Saturdays of the month. The parents really enjoyed the structure of it and the no check toys, so it's kind of a time to put tech away and focus on structured play. And then upcoming, we have music time on Wednesdays and steam afternoon on Thursdays. Teresa is working on discarding of her own, the old damaged picture books, and she's working on shifting the collection. She's also working on her nonfiction collection, because, you know, we want to make sure the kids have access to the most recent information. For adults, Anima's Celtic Heart music drew a crowd of eighty-two. Everyone really enjoyed it and asked when she would come back. We had ten amateur genealogists at the first genealogy club, so she was really pleased with that turnout.
Oh, sure.
And we had a great discussion of their family history projects, which was nice, and we tuned into the Bristol County Chapter's speaker presentation. She already has a number of signups for the March event, too. Local author Stephen Manchester had thirty-five people for his presentation on his book, He Will Be Peter, which he co-authored with Jerry Lathan. And then Novelty's had a good crowd for their Phoenix Crown discussion. Twenty participants were in here, and last night they had nineteen. So we're gonna move them back into the gallery
Yeah.
so that they can spread out a little bit more, because it was kind of packed. Upcoming, we have local author Al Soneers talking about the French in New Bedford, March eleventh, the other genealogy club, Novelty's, and Matt York presents the Highwayman Stories and Songs, March twenty-seventh. That's a Lakeville Arts Council grant that he wrote, so it'll be here. So I saw that the trees and the shrubs were marked for keeping, we're just, I sent a note to Franklin to say we're ready to move forward with the next phases.
Yeah, I talked to him, too.
Verizon has completed the install, and we're just waiting for Bob McNally to switch the cables and make sure the Wi-Fi access points are connected properly. Still monitoring leaks in terms of the roof and ceiling. Fire panel inspection and sprinkler system inspection is scheduled for Friday, February twenty-eighth, at twelve-thirty. You may have noticed a beeping when you came in the door.
Yeah.
There's a backup battery that needs replacement, and it's in the town's equipment in the server room. Bob McNally's aware, and that's when he's gonna come back and hopefully switch the cables and replace that battery. He's looking at Friday afternoon, because it will disrupt service to the historic library if if he switches the, the backup battery out. Then we have our yearly contract for Earth and Water came in, and a hundred dollars more. Bringing the cost to install the pumps and fill both waterfalls will be twelve hundred dollars this year. And we do end up paying them a little more for winterizing, so the total cost is probably gonna be around fifteen hundred to sixteen hundred. And I think Jamie had mentioned that we might want to look at having the smaller of the waterfalls redone at some point, so I can talk to Earth and Water about getting it equaled.
Gonna make sure we're not having any leaks in the basins, yeah.
So the Legislative Breakfast in Plymouth is Friday, February twenty-eighth. I wanted to attend that, and then our Southeastern Massachusetts Libraries Legislative Breakfast is on track for March seventh, and I know everybody here is attending, so thank you. We have nine legislators currently signed up to come. Jean Carter is reaching the end of her probationary period coming up next month, so I'll be sending in her letter to continue in her evaluation. And I've registered for a library summit on social cohesion in Devens, Massachusetts, on Friday, April eleventh. This is hosted by the Mass Library System, Massachusetts Board of Library Commission, and Simmons University School of Library Information Science. It's an all-day event, and they're really gonna focus on how we can build community and sort of provide stable place for discussion and coming together.
Solidarity.
Yes. So it sounded like a very interesting thing to attend, and I wanted to make sure I was able to go. The Friends met on February third to discuss the upcoming tea fundraiser, which will be May fourth, Sunday, and they got their membership appeal envelopes ready to go. The next meeting is Monday, March third, and they'll be finishing up the tea planning, and then, of course, golf is April thirteenth.
April thirteenth?
Yep, but golf is April thirteenth. Cindy Connolly's exhibit will come down on Friday, and the gallery committee is going to be very busy.
Oh, is it, is it high school?
Well, we're putting up a, Friday morning Cindy's will come down. Friday afternoon, I'm meeting with a homeschool group to put up a one-day show for Saturday.
And the, for the March first, is that right?
Yes.
March first.
And then that show will come down at the end of library hours, and Sunday afternoon, I'll be in to put up the high school show. And then at the end of the high school show, I'll repeat the process with a middle school show, one-day show, so.
On?
On April thirtieth, right?
I think so. April twenty-ninth. I'm not a high school show, a middle school show.
Oh, April twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth. So I'll take down the high school show on the twenty-eighth. But then we have a blank couple of weeks. I've offered the middle school to leave their wall work up, but that means any of the three-dimensional things, those kids will not get the same exposure, so they're still making a decision on that. Otherwise, the next exhibit will go up on April eleventh. Painting. Painting the walls, yeah, there's that. Anyway, so it's gonna be a busy month in the gallery.
You have help?
Oh, yes.
And the Aquaniquet High School musicians.
Oh, it's gonna be Randy Swine?
Yeah.
Okay, great.
Yeah.
So the Saturday, March eighth, will be the reception for the high school show?
Yes, and we've got, they have, it's the jazz band without the horns. They're trying to keep it a little bit quieter, so they're just calling
Quiet in the library?
Aquaniquet, well, quieter than the jazz band. It's a small space, it's not an auditorium, put it that way, so it should be good. Okay, any questions about Jennifer's report?
You know, it's things are happening.
I'm moving on to the budget update.
Yes, so I have submitted everything, and now we're just, I think, waiting for our appointment to speak to, I, I did talk to Andrew, Lacey, and Mike. They said everything was straightforward, so I don't think that we'll have any issues, but I don't know what the overall picture looks like yet, so if they're gonna ask us to cut anything back. So then, then we just wait for the joint Select Board FinCom meeting, where we present our budget.
Do you know when those meetings are planned?
No, I haven't heard anything yet.
Alrighty.
So that's the update.
Okay. Alright, policy review. We're moving into the tutoring policy.
This is the one you got last month, and I haven't made any changes still as it was written, and this was a relative. There was one that was in the folder, but I wasn't sure if it had been accepted yet, so I took most of that, combined it with what Teresa suggested, and this is the policy we came up with.
Have we had any problem with contracts?
Never.
So everybody who's actually tutoring understands how it works here.
And they usually request study rooms, and if that's not available, they'll find a quiet spot within the library to do it, so we don't really
How many tutors do we have coming on?
I've seen three or four reliably at least, and there may be more that I just don't
Yeah, does it go, go in through the summer as well?
Around.
Okay. Any discussion questions?
I move that we accept the updated library tutoring policy.
Second?
All of us in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, yes, passes. We'll accept the tutoring policy as written. The wireless policy.
So as I was putting this together, I wondered if it might be better to sandwich this with the computer and internet use policy. It was kind of put separately in the old policy manual that Olivia had had. Whether it might be just better to tack it on to computer and internet use, because it does refer to the computer and internet use policy.
Should mean it should be put, put together.
Seems a little old-fashioned this way, because the wireless was added on to our dial-in, our plug-in, or whatever. So, yes.
So this is discussion for this month and possible vote?
Vote, or if you want, I can squeeze it into the computer and internet use policy, because it is internet.
Same thing.
Why don't we coalesce those and then vote on it at the next meeting, or at least
We can, I can bring the draft, and then it can get pushed to the next meeting.
Sure, okay.
Okay.
Alrighty. And these were the only policies we're discussing this time.
Yes, because we accepted the bricks. I think we still need to work on the brick form, though. I gotta find that.
Yeah.
The memorial brick form.
Yeah, I redid it a little bit. I'm not sure if I have it completed, but anyway, okay.
Yeah, we can work on that.
And the gallery committee will be going over our policy at our next meeting, but the meeting probably won't be till September. Alright. Onto the business, draft of the annual town report.
So I haven't been asked for it yet, but I wanted to make sure I got it done. So the annual town report, pretty much keeping the same format as last year's, which I know Jamie had put, I used Jamie's sort of template for it, added a few things under genealogy research, under the services. Didn't change much about certification. Programs always swap out. I put in, you know, who we posted during the year, and pretty much kept the same format. And then the statistics at the end, obviously. And one of the things I did this year, you'll notice in the statistics, is that I added hoopla and canopy instant titles, which makes our holdings look enormous. And I'm not sure if you want to keep that in. I thought it might be important to keep in because we have access to it.
It's part of our collection, right?
Yes.
So we should, and that way people will have another way of realizing we actually have it.
Yeah. And I know there's some, there's some controversy surrounding hoopla, because they have been adding content that is AI-generated and somewhat questionable, but they have promised to remove that content, so the number might go down slightly. This was sort of as of the beginning of the year, and then I would imagine it might take a nosedive when some of the AI content is taken out.
That's good to me.
And I make a suggestion for it, on the first page, where it says, artists applied to the gallery committees, a committee of board of trustees to have their materials shown. I would prefer it said to have their artwork considered for exhibit, because it's not a one-in that you just contact.
Oh, it isn't?
It is not.
It's juried.
We are a juried gallery, and we have worked hard to keep.
Maybe the word juried should be in there, so that people know that it's I'm not sure, you may have changed that to say that.
You know, if we say artwork considered for exhibit, I think that
Yeah.
Okay, I can change that.
Okay. Thank you.
And please feel free to read later and send in suggestions for changes.
It looks really good, though. Thank you for doing that.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have an audio, video, audio proposals review and cost. We always love things where cost is involved.
Well, I finally got to the AV proposals and looking at various products and getting some reviews where I could find them. So I just summarized that in this two-page document here. So all the companies pretty much had good ratings.
This is out of five, out of five stars?
Yeah, five stars on both review places for East West Associates. Okers had four point four out of eighteen reviews. I think when you look at the number of reviews, you can kind of gauge, like East West Associates only had four reviews that I could find. And then CCS Presentation Systems had five stars on Google. I think they had more. I forgot to write down how many they had, but they had more. And they had testimonials listed on their website from various places on CCS Presentation Systems. So they go in order of cost. East West Associates had the least cost, CCS Presentation Systems was the highest cost. I felt like they also had a lot of stuff that we don't necessarily need in their CCS Presentation Systems. I didn't include all the proposals I've given to them to you before, but they had a lot of equipment that I don't feel like is necessary for that meeting room. It's extraneous equipment that we have to teach other people how to use.
Oh, that's, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I'm not sure that would be the best way to go. They did give both Okers and CCS gave me a sort of pared-down approach, which was basically some speakers and a mixer, and that did cut back on the cost significantly. But I wanted to make sure that we updated the projector, that we got a decent sound system, and that we would get the assistive listening technologies. I could not find the assistive listening technologies on the CCS presentation, so I'm not sure if they were left off, or they're included in some way. When he, when the representative came, he sort of indicated that was just included, but I couldn't find it there. Another problem, too, is all those quotes that I have are older now, so we're likely to be experiencing a higher cost on a lot of these products, though maybe not necessarily. I noticed some of the products they use have been on the market for a while, so obviously there are newer, better versions available. So what I can do is go back to, if you want to, have me go back to East West and Okers to get some updated numbers and see what, what they come back with, and then we can make a choice or, or decide if we're not ready to do the audio, but it might be something to get done before the anniversary.
Yeah.
And especially if, you know, we want to make sure that that room is accessible, and right now it's not accessible. That's my big concern.
Sound, some way should be.
Yeah, people, people often complain that they cannot hear so many times, and, and it's hard to get, it's actually hard to get the the committees to actually use the microphones we have, so I just want to give them no choice. You have to use it, and especially if we have somebody who needs the assistive listening devices.
Great. I think that's a good idea, so you'll bring it back to us.
Mm-hmm. So you want me to go ahead with just the two, not the most expensive?
No, not at all.
Yeah, we don't need all that.
Well, the other thing is that the Northwest got five stars on two different
He's also the one that's working on the pavilion. It's the same company. And Okers I'm familiar with, they used to do Plumb's tech, IT technology, and they're a very reliable company.
Okay. Next on the agenda is Food for Fines.
So I asked Tracy if she had heard anything about food for fines, whether it has to be approved by the Select Board. She wrote back, she said she asked Andrew, he said, yes, it would be, because the fines go into the general fund. So I've written up a letter that I can send tomorrow to Tracy, and we can be included on the March tenth Select Board Agenda to discuss it, so I've written up the basics that they would need to know. And if there's anything you want me to take out of the letter or put into the letter, just let me know.
I like that. We will not remove twenty card overdue charges for one jar of sauce.
Yeah, because people will ask that.
Is starting, fine starting on a certain date, is that when?
I put it as current charges on their card.
Okay.
So anything that's currently on their card, which could be a charge from, could be a ten cent charge from So anything that's currently on their card, which could be a charge from, could be a ten cent charge from two years ago. As long as they're willing to give a can of food, I will take that ten cent charge off.
So if you had twenty current overdue charges, we would expect that they would donate twenty items?
Yes.
Okay, so I can get, make sure, making sure that's clear.
It's a one for one.
One for one.
Yeah.
Do you think if it's two months, two regular months out of the year, that people will like bring things in late? And saying, I'll just bring some food in next month? Or, I mean, is it?
I gotta play the system?
Yeah, I mean, do you think anybody cares that much?
I don't really think they care that much. And we've seen a significant drop in fines just because of automatic renewals.
Right.
So I can provide them, like I've made up a chart, um, of fines. It's steadily dropped after the automatic renewal started to almost, eh, it's about half.
So if it's actually a funding area for the town, they've already seen the drop?
They've already seen the drop and this at most might be six to seven hundred dollars out of that.
Sure.
However, it is going to stocking up pantry that will be used.
Right, and I think the fact that you've said that the monthly fees that fines that get turned into general, they go to general, right? Would be around three hundred.
So if we do it for a month, we could just do it for one month. I mean.
I mean, I was just wondering if we just decide one year to do March and February, or March and September.
Yeah.
And the next year to do December and June and
Right.
Just make them happy. Oh, by the way.
And it depends on what, I think talking to Lori at the COA and seeing, you know, she's, she, they're still working on getting it stocked. It's all ready to go.
Andrew's the sidewalk.
Yeah, they need the ramp put in. And so, once they're ready to go, she said she does have some other people that are helping out, but I figured this might be a way to, especially if she has a need of a particular item, like if she has twenty boxes of pasta and forty jars of peanut butter, what can we suggest that people bring in?
Maybe low sodium stuff too, or, um, low fat?
I think people will donate whether they have fines or not. You know, if we put up a sign that says, uh, you know, the food pantry needs for the sweet tuna, peanut butter, whatever. And then I, I think people will come in with their children and drop something in every time.
We could explore the possibility of having a box here constantly for them, so we.
Be easy for people sometimes to come here as opposed to make, make their hours, you know, in terms of when that's going to be open.
How are you planning to police? I just, with your, um, all for this, I mean, I'm not, um, but I just see, where you had your comment here about the pasta and peanut butter, I just pictured somebody coming in to donate whatever. Are you gonna have staff sit there? No, I'm sorry, that doesn't count because they've, they've already got too much of that over at the.
No, I wouldn't police that particular aspect of it.
But I guess we'll take it over.
Just if, if they have a lot of peanut butter and somebody brings in peanut butter, I'm gonna accept peanut butter.
Oh, okay. I guess that's where I was getting, because I just pictured.
No, I, just a list of suggestions, so that, I'll make it more clear that it's just suggested. But we'll accept, we'll accept whatever non-perishable item.
Well, that's great.
So do we want to vote on the letter?
Do you want me to change that line?
And discuss possible vote?
So, so the line in question, I think, is again, I will work collaboratively, collaboratively with the COA to make sure they are not overwhelmed and stocked with too much. Do you want me to just take that line out?
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I think, I think we could vote just on the program itself. I don't know if the letter.
Yeah. The letter conveys and makes sense. Because I can look at it and say, I know what it's saying, but having somebody.
Except I just didn't, because I do know we do various types of fine programs as well. One being, um, our concert series is your ticket into the show is a donation to the food pantry. But you do have the people that, which I find funny, start arguing with you over, well, I have this can of, I mean, I'm not policing what people donate. And like, like I said, just seeing that, I would hate to have the staff have to deal with.
Yeah, I can just say we'll just post suggestions.
Yeah.
Yeah, or we will collaborate with the COA to post suggestions of what their needs are.
Like we know Church of Christ does a food pantry donation weekly to Middleborough, to Central Congregational Churches thing. And what we get is information about how many pounds are collected and what things that they are in particularly in need of or having requests for. So you can alter what you typically would give. It's not unusual for that to happen.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to approve this project.
I will move that we approve the Food for Fines program.
Aye, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Jennifer.
Good idea.
Thank you.
I'll let, I'll talk with Lori and, um.
I love supporting them. It's wonderful. All right, uh, let's see. Our twentieth anniversary is coming up in August, so.
Nancy just gave me the
Two thousand and ten.
Fifth anniversary. So we still, we haven't met yet. Nancy and I haven't met yet, so we have to meet to make some plans.
So I think we still have time?
Yes, we do.
To talk about it. So this, I would say it's ongoing?
Yes, we'll just pop it on to next, the next one.
And I also have the, um, filming from the webcam of the dedication too, so that's something.
So everybody can see how young they were then.
But the pictures in here.
Look at people that are no longer with us too when you figure.
Yeah, a lot of them.
Fifteen years ago, yeah.
We could do a little section on our exhibit of in memoriam or.
Yeah, people that, people that made major contributions to the library.
The Saddes.
The St. George's.
The St. George's, yeah.
People like that, that people should know about because, just because they're not here.
Nancy and Ruth skipping school because, you know, they had to become a trusty member or something. We're just very young.
Well, um, yes, the, uh, if we have a reception, which I assume we are planning.
We're gonna have something.
Something big. I would like to send invitations to members of the building committee and trustees, at least since this.
Right, and former directors.
Former directors, but maybe trustees, I mean trustees who are still alive.
Yeah, some of the trustees are still.
But, I mean, but no, if you go back to the trustees who are still in the area, that's, most of them have been trustees in the last twenty years, you know, so.
And we are just, we're just talking about the life, this building. We're not talking about the historic library going back to the beginning of time.
No, 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 no. But it doesn't hurt to include trustees of that library during the time when it became apparent that that library was no longer functioning for us, because that's how it all gets started.
Most of those were on the building committee anyways, so.
And staff members who.
Yes, I think that would be nice because twentieth is like a big deal, you know?
So we just need to plan it in time to get these invitations and get addresses.
They should go out like thirty days before.
Yeah, okay. All right. Let's learn next.
So it's a five pager. I'll let you read it at your leisure. But I will summarize a lot of the interesting points. So Saturday I attended six sessions. Some great things about looking at customer experiences and how to use personas. Um, I would like to try to bring that idea to our strategic plan or strategic frameworks. There was another, um, Sunday session where they talked about using strategic frameworks rather than a set strategic plan to kind of guide your actions throughout the year, so I found that interesting. Recovery in the library to look at substance use disorder. Activities for patients with dementia. I only got to the last fifteen minutes of that session, but, um, I saved the slides and the handouts to sort of look at how we can change our marketing materials or make things like memory kits or something that can help dementia patients and their families and caregivers. Watching clouds for NASA was fun. We did a hands-on activity where we, um, sort of estimated cloud cover and, um, I would like to do some more citizen science. I think the kids would love it.
Yeah, that would be great. We have all this open sky over here, you know?
Um, did you hear that audio supplements and newsletters was primarily about the National Library Congress, the Service for the Blind and their newsletter, which is sort of a supplement, um, audio supplement that talks about the collection, events that are going on, or disability activism. It was pretty interesting that, um, the presenter said he was told no podcasts because this originally was an idea for a podcast, so then they changed it to be an audio supplement to the newsletter and they said, yes, that sounds like a great idea, so. You know, just repackage it and it's fine. But it was, um, it was a nice idea to think about how could we provide some sort of audio supplement we do for the newsletter. Reinvigorating Green Spaces was a really interesting one, Nancy. I think you would like, they took an abandoned community garden and turned it into a library space. Um, this is the Queens Public Library. The Cambria Heights Community Garden Club manages the space. Meetings are open to everybody. They use it as programming space. They use it, um, for other people to have walking clubs, book clubs. Um, it's a wonderful little space. It doesn't really, it's not focused on like a traditional community garden you think of with, everybody has a plot of land. It's pretty much just a library maintained, volunteer maintained space.
So this was a lot in the city that was abandoned?
Yeah, and it was a trust. Um, the owner was one of the land trusts or something and they, um, I can send you.
So it has perpetuity, yeah.
Yep, so they were happy to partner with the library for that.
Have to check that one out.
Um, and I went to a genealogical one because of the focus we've had on genealogy lately. They started a day-long conference where they bring speakers together, so it's a virtual thing. It's coming up on March twenty ninth if you wanted to look at it. So Arizona Day, they have a bunch of people speak, they present slides, and she just kind of ran through all the steps you would need to take to do something similar. Um, and then navigating misinformation and one-on-one patron interactions. Again, we had a lot of, um, group interaction. One of the ones is, I put in there was, I read an article that explained birds aren't real and they're actually government drones to spy on us. I think that makes a lot of sense. What do you think? And how to navigate that conversation rather than just shutting it down. So I found that pretty useful and will try to, you know, think with the staff, maybe presented a staff meeting, some of those ideas use some of the examples they gave. And then finally, um, reimagining community engagement with transformative, creative, innovative strategic partnerships. This is the one that presented about strategic frameworks. And really it was about aligning library services to community goals, which I think is something we already tried to do. And, um, one of the things she mentioned was reading the work of futurists and people who are looking, um, into the next, the next big thing, innovation. Um, so try to look at strategic foresight and futurist writings to see how library services will change as AI grows and as things, the world changes, so.
That, that is.
It was a lot.
Lot, yeah.
So it was a really.
I'm sure it's still inspiring for you to go and do that.
Yeah, and I still have access to a lot of the slides, so even the stuff I didn't get to attend, I can go through and see if there's any thing I want to pull out and look at for us.
Thank you. Okay, so we also have monthly statistics and Teresa's report.
Yeah, for your reading pleasure. And then I just, on note, on the statistics, I started adding the Wi-Fi use because I think that's an interesting statistic. If you look, we had five hundred and thirty sessions last month with one thousand three hundred and ninety-eight hours and eight minutes of use. So it does get heavily used.
Yeah. And it's, is, there's still a limit on time to use the computers?
There's still a limit on time to use the computers, the public computers, so it's, I think, an hour.
Are we still checking out the keyboards?
The keyboards are there.
There, okay.
So the study reviews, the smart, small and large, that wasn't all tutorials, meetings and things like that?
It was sometimes just a single person studying.
Somebody wanted a quiet space with a telephone or children, okay. And twenty-four volunteer hours, that's good.
That includes the new student volunteers from Aponequit. They've been doing really well. Nicole Briggs, the teacher, just wrote to me yesterday with the March dates. She said they very much enjoyed having the experiences, so.
Good.
Great.
Future library keepers. Only way to get them.
All right, um, is there anything else anyone like, would like to bring up in all their new business or anything else?
No, only that the, um, Snowman Jubilee Group is still in discussion about what the plans will be for December, second weekend, Saturday in December, um, for that. So, and they're talking with town, different town department heads and stuff, so just.
So that's the thirteenth of December?
I think it is the thirteenth right now. Whether or not, um, they'll expand the program or not, that still hasn't, it's just in discussion right now.
All right, um, our next meeting, I guess, would be the same day.
Nineteenth?
March twenty-sixth.
Twenty-sixth.
Oh, are we normally the fourth?
Yeah.
Okay.
All right, March twenty-sixth. So work for everybody, nine AM. All right. Hearing no more business, I will entertain a motion.
I will move we close at nine fifty AM.
Some second.
Those in favor? Okay.
Thank you, Dan.